So we'd like to welcome everyone to our first work session of the 2023 school year. Today is Monday, January 9th. Uh, this is our, again, our work session. Um, all board members are present in the boardroom except for member Wilson. Uh, she is joining us online. Um, so, uh, that was item A. We're moving on to item B. Is our request for information? I think we had one that came in that we need to prioritize in terms of the time it's got, you know, how quickly that information is available. I think it came from member Donley. And so we, we are going to pull that up. The request is, is, uh, beginning in 2010 through the most recent. What are the reading and math proficiency scores for ASD students? So, um, I think there are two board members that are interested in that information. So, uh, Dr. Bryant, how, what is the, uh, your best guess? Do we have a, we have an assessment person now, right?
Right. We just have our new assessment person. Um, so we did speak this morning and I do believe we could get this into not this board connect, but the next board connect of historical, um, peaks and, uh, the, the most recent Aaster data to look at.
So would that data also include the assessment tool that's used for each one of those years? So like now we're in Alaska Star, before we were in another thing. And so that would be, there would be a different, okay.
Yeah. So we would note the different type of assessment and that's something that we should keep in mind. It's not apples to oranges.
Okay. Remember Donley? Is that good timeframe?
Yes, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, let's see. Is there, was that the only one, Amanda? Okay. Uh, so we're tracking these pretty closely. So if I, if I miss one of yours, please let me know. Uh, member Higgins, I know you had a, uh, another.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. Um, and I think the administration may get, uh, confused on this as well. I think the general expectation is that if a board member has a request for information that's readily available, can be provided. It doesn't have to be delayed to be a, a expression from the board. That we would go ahead and get the information directly and, and quickly. Um, providing you, the, the president of the board, letting you know when information's being requested or when information's been obtained is good for both the administration and the board members. Let you know so we can keep it looped. But I don't want to be in a position where the board has to approve what information the general public could get with a Freedom of Information Act request or anything like that. If it's a situation that requires considerable time and resources, then just like a member of the public may have to pay for that Freedom of Information Act request, the board is incurring costs that the board may want to be the one in, to prioritize to the administration how important this is and what do we want. But I think as long as the information can be obtained readily, uh, quickly without extensive costs or time, I would hope that each board member would get a response quickly, as, as quickly as possible, and then go forward. And if that's my understanding, we'll go forward with that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And I think, uh, what you said is exactly what our bylaws say. Uh, I think, uh, the only other piece that I would add, which you did add at the end, is the timeliness of it all. Um, and, and please, the other piece would be to put it in writing so we know exactly what your thoughts are around the information request. Uh, but the only reason it comes, the request for information process is to, uh, of course, share among ourselves what each other is interested in and then try to figure out with the superintendent whether it is readily accessible or, um, or not. And then that way we have to prioritize. So that is my understanding of what our bylaws say.
And, and just to clarify, my, my interest is dealing with certain budgetary historical data that is readily available by anybody looking at the books, but it's been generated maybe by finance in some way, shape or form that's less timely, uh, time consuming. And so rather than bringing someone with me to say, I'd like to see this and have somebody else do it. The board, the, the, you've got a lot of competent people in, in the group that have already generated a lot of information. And I'm asking for stuff I believe that's already been generated.
Okay. And, and the, the other thing is, uh, we do have access to, a lot of the budget questions are probably somewhere in the documents we've already seen. Um, sometimes I will, I will send a page number or a link when I answer questions. Um, so that I, people can get to where they want to be really quickly. Um, but no, I think our bylaws are, are clear. If the information is readily available, it can be, once requested, um, through the superintendent, copied the president, once available, once, once the assessment is, uh, made as to how available it is, uh, that, that assessment won't be the board's, but it'll be the superintendent's or staff. And then we, it should be readily, it should be, um, either given to the board member right away or put in some kind of priority so that we can get you that information. Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you, guys. Uh, any other RFIs from board members? Okay, seeing none. I'd like to welcome everybody back, including staff. Uh, this is gonna be a wonderful, amazing new year. All right. So let's go on now to our discussion item for the day. Uh, school start times. Um, there was a little bit of a misunderstanding that this had something to do with our, uh, school closure plan. It does not. Uh, this is a, uh, new discussion for this board, but a, uh, um, we're revisiting school start times, uh, I think from nineteen, from 2019, eight, 2018. Okay. Dr. Bryant?
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, ASD Board and Community, and Happy New Year. Um, so as was shared, um, while there's a lot of work to still be done on balancing our budget for next year, today's work session will shift gears a bit and focus on a different topic that's come out throughout the fall and historically in ASD, which is the conversation around potentially adjusting school start times. So our panel will brief the board on prior efforts completed in ASD to adjust start times, the benefits and consideration for making adjustments. Um, and while any major change like this involves trade-offs for a number of reasons, I do feel that this is something the board should strongly consider. And we look forward to answering your questions to assist in making informed decisions. So with that said, I'll hand it off to our panel.
Thank you. Um, I'm not sure how many board members were here in 2018 when we went through this, um, too. So it's, it's certainly new to everyone here, but we did do an exhaustive, um, effort to reach community members on both surveys as well as town halls and, and focus groups. And Shannon Bingham, um, was the, the lead consultant the first time. And so today we're just going to show initially an overview of the efforts we took in the past, the recommendations that we ended up, um, concluding with as a result of focus groups, work groups and surveys. And I think everyone is aware that ultimately, um, there was one board member voted yes and the other six voted no. Um, so the school's start times didn't change. So as we're going through this and you get an idea of the amount of effort that was put into this effort, um, I think that we have enough data. We could probably do it a little bit quicker, um, the second time around. Um, and possibly have something as, as early as after spring break to try to look at for next year. But we will be asking the board for a general idea as to whether, um, four or more board members think it's worth the effort to go through this right now, um, or not. Because it, it is a significant amount of effort and the same planners for all of this, of course, are the same ones for sixth grade to middle school, school closures and all the other things. So we, we would like at the end, um, just some signaling or, or, or agreement that the board does want us to move forward before we start this effort.
Right. Thank you.
With that, I'll hand over to Shannon.
Well, thank you, Jim. Um, good evening, everyone. It's a privilege to be here. Uh, Happy New Year. Um, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Can, is a 20-minute, uh, cycle through 20 slides appropriate or should I go quicker?
20 sounds about right.
Okay, very good. Well, my intent here is to, um, give a bit of a history of what we've done so far. Um, I have done quite a bit of this nationally and, um, have been involved in, um, attempts to, um, change school start times that have, uh, um, been implemented and others that have, um, that have not. And so, um, I'll, uh, talk a little bit about, uh, kind of national perspective as I go along. Um, on the next slide, you will see kind of my, my summary of the chronology. Uh, we were asked to do this by the, uh, board during a retreat. There was a, um, a petition that was submitted by a high school student that we were responding to at a certain point. Um, between the fall of 2017 and fall of 2018, we collected quite a bit of pro and con, uh, research. We, um, uh, engaged Dr. Lisa Meltzer, who is a nationally known sleep researcher focusing on adolescent sleep issues with National Jewish Hospital, who, uh, gave us an online presentation. I can provide that to the board as a link. Um, and then we engaged in a very, um, extensive stakeholder process that included both, uh, focus groups and open house meetings. The focus groups were with teacher groups, employee groups, bus driver groups, student groups, I think at all three levels, uh, including some, uh, fifth graders who were involved. Um, the Chamber of Commerce, we also engaged, a variety of childcare providing groups were also engaged. And, um, I don't remember exactly the total count of meetings, but, um, I, I would say it was probably, uh, 25 to 35, somewhere in that range. We were beginning with three options, most of which focused on what was the research preferred start order for schools. And at that time, nationally, the preference was that elementary school students would start first, followed by middle, followed by high. So the idea was to put the high school age learners in the last starting position to be more in tune with their circadian rhythm and the time at which, um, the average high school student engages and is ready to learn. Um, in April of 18, we, um, had an intensive cycle of open house meetings, media events, uh, meetings in this room where we, um, uh, showed data and survey results and processed the issue. At that point, um, the survey data was indicating that the majority of the community was not in favor of a change. So we modified the proposed options to a second set called Options A and B. And we engaged Hays Research to do a telephone survey in which, um, Option A was, uh, slightly favored, uh, during that telephone survey of approximately 385, um, participants. And then the administration reviewed all of the information from the first survey and the information from the second survey and moved forward with what was called Option B, um, which would put, um, again, high school in first position, followed by elementary and middle, but we were pushing our start time back approximately, uh, 30 minutes. Um, and then, um, uh, this issue was voted on in August and had the result, uh, that Jim indicated. Um, the next slide shows the principal, um, information piece that was circulated to the community, including the pros and cons. Why are we doing this? Uh, national epidemic on performance behavioral and, uh, wellness issues on the part of high school and middle school students associated with, um, early starts. And, um, you can see there the current start time, high school at 7:30, middle at 8:15, elementary at nine, and then Scenario 1 put high school in first place. Um, uh, I'm sorry, put elementary in first place, starting at 7:30, followed by middle at 8:15, followed by high school at 9:00 AM. And you'll see there that we have a 45-minute window between starts. And some of the other districts nationally that addressed the school start time issue did what was called narrowing the window. And they were able to fund, um, compression of their, uh, start time windows. And many of them combined high school and middle school onto, uh, single buses. So that they went to a, um, uh, a two, uh, group, uh, morning and afternoon, uh, transportation, uh, uh, structure instead of three, which is what we have. Um, others, um, uh, just compressed that and went to a shorter morning window, trying to get the majority of their children to start school between eight and nine. So that was one of the challenges because of the Alaskan condition of darkness and weather, that we have a broader window. And so a lot of the side effects associated with various changes in start time are more profound in Alaska because we have more darkness, we have more cold, we have more pedestrian complications with children getting to school. Uh, you'll see the second option there also had, uh, elementary in first position at 7:45, followed by middle school and high school, 8:30 and 9:15 respectively. And then in Scenario 3, you see a reverse, um, of the high school and middle school position where high school would start second at 8:30. And part of that was triggered by a lot of the research and California law indicating that there was a preference for high school students not to start school until after 8:30. Um, since this time, there has been a lot of research on both sides. Some research continuing to endorse the school start time, uh, changes that a lot of districts have, um, proposed and adopted. Another research saying that there's not much benefit. Again, the Alaskan condition is so much different than other parts of the country because of the amount of darkness and the shortness of days. Um, however, we did do some exploration of the transition from predominant light to predominant dark, darkness and found that there was about a two and a half week transition in and a two and a half week transition out of dark conditions in the fall and winter respectively. And that, um, that would be the predominant period in which there was impact. A lot of the pushback of high school start time later in the day created later releases. And some of the concern from high school, uh, constituents, either parents or students, was that if students had an after-school job or they had multiple sports and extracurricular activities that they were engaged in, that there would be less time for those activities and that for high school students practicing, um, on fields, that a lot of times darkness would complicate that. Several districts nationally wound up lighting their fields, purchasing buses, um, in order to compress their start time windows so that they could do something that was more in compliance with the medical research. Now, um, Lisa Meltzer continues to do this work. I think I forwarded to you through Jim Anderson, a exit research piece on the Cherry Creek School District in the Denver metro area, where Dr. Meltzer did an extensive post-change evaluation. And most of the results that she found were positive for both students and parents. I will say, being, um, Cherry Creek's consultant for almost 25 years, that they implemented the change right in the middle of the school bus driver crisis. And there were quite a few challenges to go operational, um, with the change. Uh, the next slide shows, um, more of the rationale behind why Anchorage School District considered this change. Um, there is, uh, quite a bit of, uh, uh, research pro and con cited there, mostly from, uh, medical doctors and pediatricians. Uh, I will say there are four or five, um, sleep disorder centers in Fairbanks and at least a dozen in, uh, the Anchorage Bowl. And anecdotally, quite a few of the pediatricians that we, uh, consulted as a part of this process were strongly in favor of making a change predominantly for high school and middle school student wellness. Um, the next slide shows, uh, the open house meeting, uh, uh, results. Uh, we had a mixture of elementary and secondary students. In some cases, there was a little bit of a, well, this may help high school and middle school students, but it results in elementary students starting earlier. Uh, the research indicated that because elementary students go to bed earlier, that they're more ready to learn earlier than high school students because of their circadian rhythm based on their age. And again, this is a topic of dissent within the research. There is pro and con research and all of this is complicated by the Alaskan condition. Um, open house participants were more in favor of retaining, um, the current schedule, um, versus those that would favor making a change. Uh, secondary parents and students were more in favor of change while participants representing the elementary, uh, school, students were less in favor of it. Uh, there you see some of the concerns for elementary pedestrian safety, uh, before and after childcare, uh, challenges, especially when a high school student might be providing that service for a family member. Secondary concerns were extracurriculars. Childcare where the high school student is, um, supervising an elementary student. And then after-school employment. When we met with the Chamber of Commerce representatives, they indicated that they would rather have a healthy, um, high school population than have, um, an, an, a more readily available employment base. And so, um, I, I would say that that, um, community, uh, meeting was, um, somewhat in favor of, um, the wellness aspects, uh, for high school students. Um, on the next page, um, you'll see, uh, the focus groups. We had 440, uh, folks that participated in 20-some-odd focus groups. Um, there were more teacher and students, uh, involved, um, in the focus groups. The open houses were more exclusively parents. Uh, the focus groups were balanced between elementary and secondary. And the open house, uh, meetings had more elementary, um, parents participating. Uh, the focus group, uh, participants were generally in favor of change at all levels, agreed with the research more readily, uh, than others. And then, um, I, I, agreed with the idea that it was, uh, a strongest benefit to secondary students. Um, let's see, the next page, and I'll speed up a little bit here, uh, shows the, uh, tables where, uh, for focus groups, we had, uh, 48% uh, very favorable or favorable for a change to elementary school, uh, start times earlier. Uh, the next slide shows for focus groups, we had, um, again, a majority in favor of later start for middle school students. And then the next slide shows the, um, overwhelming, uh, preference on the part of, um, high school stakeholders engaged in focus groups for a later high school start time. Um, in the open house meetings, again, these were more populated by, um, parents and, uh, quite a few faculty members were engaged in these. The next slide indicates the, um, open house result here where we had, um, uh, less support for change. 45% of participants would prefer the current schedule. And then on the next slide, um, their preferred scenario was 48% the current start time. And their most favored scenario was Scenario 3, which, um, I think, uh, uh, was the one that had the least effect. So at this point, we kind of reconfigured the scenarios. This next slide shows the administration's response to, um, the first round. Uh, we wanted to have an impartial telephone survey where we, um, got a very objective, uh, response, uh, based upon the information that was out in the community. So we engaged Hays Research. The next slide shows, um, the scenarios that were presented. Option A would be the current schedule, only we'd push everything back 30 minutes. So that was, um, an attempt to, to offer almost everyone a concession. We would still have 45 minutes between starts, which, um, seems like a lot to me, but our recent, um, snow event, uh, really demonstrates that, um, uh, we can have, um, crippling weather events. And our current spacing between starts is very much configured to facilitate that. I was hearing anecdotally from a lot of, of folks in the bus driver community that they were sitting and waiting a lot in the window. But again, those were on sunny, uh, days, um, when they were driving on, um, uh, uh, well-gravelled ice or bare pavement. And, um, they found that they, um, were able to drive their routes very quickly in good conditions and that those 45 minutes between starts were really configured for snow days. Um, Option B, we would start 30 minutes later, but we would switch. And so elementary would start at 8:00 AM and release at 2:30. High school would start at 8:45 and release at 3:15. And middle school would start at 9:30 and release at 4:00. And so in Option B, there was a little bit more of a research-based, um, advantage to how the starts were structured. Um, as we move to the results of the Hays Research, those are shown on the next slide. You'll see that most everyone engaged in the Hays Research wanted to make a change. So 45.7% wanted Option A, which was the current schedule, only push it back 30 minutes. Um, Option B is the 30 minutes later, but switch a few of the age groups and put, um, high school students in the middle position, elementary students in the first position. And 37.6% of Hays, uh, phone calls favored Option B. And then 12.5% said, don't change anything, leave it the way it is. Um, the administration considered that information. There was a desire among senior leadership to, um, try to be research compliant. When we went out to the chamber event and we started networking with some of the Anchorage, um, leadership, there was a lot of, uh, support for what we were doing from a research standpoint. So you can see, um, that, uh, the, uh, community, uh, or the Chamber of Commerce group actually favored Scenarios 3 and 2. So, um, when they were looking at the change scenarios, they were very much in favor of making a change. They saw it as a wellness event. Um, on the next slide, you'll see through the whole process, some of the things were of most concern were before and after childcare. We met with, uh, the three largest childcare providing agencies and processed some of these issues with them. Um, there were some serious concerns. Um, I, and we getting a lot of people indicating that they thought 7:30 was too early for high school. Uh, a lot of people thought that this was challenging for after-school activities and sports. A lot of people have said, um, this has been overdue for quite some time. And then we start seeing, um, elementary research isn't kind of cohesive. So the predominance of the disagreement between pro and con research that you'll see in the literature focuses on when elementary school should start. There doesn't seem to be a national consensus on that issue, whereas the high school and middle school, um, issue is more clear. And that's the thing that would suggest to me that trying to narrow the window, meaning the change, the difference in time between high school, middle school and elementary start in order to get some benefit, but spend less time moving children around in the morning, lessens some of these concerns because it negates some of the issues. And if you decide to go farther into this, I will, um, hang some ornaments on that tree and explain to you why that would be the case. Um, on the next slide, uh, you will see, um, the recommendation that was put forward was that high school should start at eight instead of 7:30. And we would put elementary school in second position at 8:45 and then middle school at 9:30. You can see the background and rationale behind. uh why we advocated for that. The next slide shows um the effect at each school level of the magnitude of change. High school would get thirty minutes more. Middle school would be seventy-five minutes later. Um, and then elementary school would begin uh fifteen minutes earlier than the current schedule. So the magnitude of change was greatest for middle school um age range children. And we thought about that as a as a group and reconciled that we thought that um that particular group of children could handle that. And again, this recommendation on September twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen was not adopted. Uh, the next slide shows um kind of some structural issues that if you decide to move forward with um considering this issue further, uh we should explore. Um, so the two structural solutions are to combine middle and high school students onto single buses. And then the other one is to narrow the window or compress the window. So window compression has been an issue that a lot of districts have thrown money at in order to negate some of the um after school activity, childcare um issues that came out of their start time discussions. And um so one of my proposals was, well, what would it cost if we compressed from forty-five to thirty minutes between each start? And then the other issue that I proposed, and these are either or, would be to put the middle school and the high school students on common buses where we would only have um a two-tiered transportation situation instead of three. Um, our transportation department yielded a nine and a half million dollars in additional capital and seven point seven million in annual operating for either option. Um, at that time, five years ago, we thought those estimates were high, but that was what was produced. And um for our consideration, um we have not estimated current cost. And this was based upon what our ridership was pre-pandemic um in twenty eighteen. And a lot of our patterning and issues have changed. This was um estimated for um a consistent among the neighborhood school start time um uh district wide, there was not a differentiation. Um both of the options would reduce the window to an hour and forty-five uh minute window uh or an hour or um a a narrower start time instead of the current one and a half hours. If we put middle and high school students on one bus, obviously, our difference between the windows would be forty-five minutes. If we stayed three tier but compressed the window from forty-five minutes to thirty, that would push us down to an hour. And a lot of the districts that had relatively smooth transitions to this threw money at their transportation budget in order to compress the window. And thereby they re- they negated a lot of the um concerns. Um, I think that's my presentation. The next slide might be discussion or oh, summary. Um nationally, a lot of districts continue to do this. Pandemic health impacts on adolescents are at a fever pitch right now. And a lot of districts are looking for anything they can do to try to improve the mental health of high school and middle school students. And so the start time issue continues to be relevant. Pro and con research, uh there's more of it out there, uh especially uh there's there's almost a fifty fifty pro con on elementary at this point. Uh, the middle school and high school research is more pro. Um, some districts have conducted credible post-change research on children and parents. And that Cherry Creek School District Study by Lisa Meltzer. And I will tell you that Dr. Meltzer is an advocate. She's a medical doctor. She's a pediatrician. She's a sleep researcher. And so her research is going to be very much pro change. Uh, both Anchorage and Fairbanks explored uh darkness, weather, pedestrian challenges, childcare, extracurriculars, sports and student jobs were all uh complications to making a change. And um I think uh without funding to adjust those start and end time windows, the conditions specific to Alaska will continue to complicate uh change efforts. Um, so that's my presentation. I'm delighted to answer any questions that you might have, and I'll thank you in advance for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. Questions? Okay, I see two to my left. Let's go mem- member Jacobs and then member Higgins.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so I know we are continuing to make changes and optimize um our student transportation schedule. And I I think what I remember Mr. Holland speaking to um at one point is um our new system finding efficiencies requiring um fewer routes and drivers potentially in future years. Is there any intersectionality between bridging the gap for um compressing the the start time window for middle and high school and those efficiencies that were identified previously?
Um, through the president to member Jacobs, um we'll be bringing TransFinder along this spring. The the primary reason to change school start times is not transportation efficiencies, because as we get TransFinder and then GPS tracking of buses and we find other ways to make efficiencies occur, we would do that whether start times changed or not. Um, and by the summer, we'll be able to start moving forward to making efficiencies regardless of the start time component.
Member Higgins. Oh, did you have a follow-up, member Jacobs?
Just a quick follow-up. Yeah, thank you. Your points were taken. Um, I I think that it's noteworthy. Our current schedule doesn't align with what the CDC and American Academy of Pediatrics recommends for middle and high school. So there's, I think there's definitely other reasons to do it. Just curious how transportation optimization, and we've talked about, you know, at some point addressing our guard rail regarding um making sure that there's equity and and access to our charter and special programs. And so wondering how that might interact. Um I I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Member Higgins.
Thank you. Um, as I recall, and this, I'm dating myself, of course. Uh, but at one time, at least one high school, I think more, had really an extra hour added on so that you could start at seven thirty or eight thirty in high school and you and and they had some teachers that wanted to stay later. This was happening at Service uh high school, and at least I was told it was. And so that uh some teachers who would like to work the hour later, they would kind of uh jockeying it so they could do that. So students that needed to get out, you know, start at seven thirty to end it for extracurricular activities, for others that could afford to get in later, they could do it. And it seemed to be working, or at least I was told it was before I got off the board the first time, twenty sixteen. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but that seemed to make a lot of sense. Because it gave, you know, it didn't, people were still taking six hours of class, but they had some teachers that liked starting a little bit later. It worked out great. So they had an early and they had a late section with the the core classes always in the middle. Are you familiar with that or or not?
I I can respond to that. Um, uh, member Higgins through the president, there was uh an offer made to some of the high school communities that if we could add a zero period, that we might be able to address the desire of students heavily engaged in sports or with an after school job in order to fulfill their course requirements. And um if we were to make a change and they um they would still be able to end their school day um in time to engage in those activities as they saw fit. There were some consistency and equity issues because we could not implement a dual transportation circumstance, I think, and give everybody a a zero period option and a first period option. But we did actually explore if students could ride one of the buses for a different level. Um, they could get to school at a different time. But if if we were going to add a zero period, that zero period would start at six fifteen or six thirty instead of seven thirty. And so that was one of the challenges that it would push earlier than any of the other schools' start times. So that would have required us to have some zero period buses um facilitating that option for children. But I do believe that that there were two or three Anchorage high schools during the past twenty years that have uh facilitated that for students. I just don't know whether they did it with or without transportation.
And and let me follow up with that. What I was told is that they provided transportation to the regular hours. But if kids, if they wanted to go with the later class, they had, it was only for the available if they had provided their own transportation. And so some of them grouped together with other kids, some had transportation on their own, and some couldn't do it. But then because of watching younger kids, some of them, the parents didn't want to do it. You can imagine that because the hot, the elementary's coming out. That's an economic impact uh in line with it. But they were, I know, I know it's service because that's right up there from where I used to visit regularly, and I was told how they were doing it. So I thought that was an interesting alternative because we really need kids later. Just from my perspective of this, the first decision here, and we can get public impact, is what's going to benefit the kids most. And and what I've seen is talks about doing it later during the day makes a difference on academic outcomes. And if we're going to help do what's best for kids, we need to come out with a plan to do that. I and and goats all count and everything else does, but at the end of the day, that's our first and highest priority. And so I'm uh inclined to really want to proceed forward.
Thank you, member Higgins. Uh, let's go with uh member Lessons and then member Holloman.
Um, I have a comment that I'll get to, but I wanted to speak to the concept of zero period, and I'll just be very personal. Um, I took calculus at seven in the morning in high school while pursuing additional extracurricular opportunities. And I had a severe mental health breakdown my junior year in high school. I would not recommend that. I don't think it's in the best interest of our students. Um, I don't want to put that kind of pressure on other students. So that's just one thought on zero period uh from my my personal experience. Um, my strong opinion continues to be, as it has been probably since I was sixteen or seventeen, um that we should start secondary schools no earlier than eight thirty and elementary no um earlier than eight in the morning. Um, I think that we have a really excited, I'm excited about this conversation. I appreciate the historical perspective. Um, I remember meeting Mr. Bingham actually in the Service High School cafeteria in twenty eighteen as a parent because I cared so much about this. Um, but we have the ability uh this this year to optimize our student outcomes and really make substantial progress on our board goals and and our guardrails, I think, by creating an evidence-based master schedule that honors the sleep needs of all of our students while prioritizing um prioritizing needs of some of our media students. Um, I think there are a couple of data points that I've been percolating uh in my mind. There's a Brookings Institution calculation I came across of the improved national academic performance that might arise out of an additional hour of sleep for all high school students acro- uh across the nation. And if you think about improved grad, high school graduation rates, college attendance and reduced car crash rates, it's about a hundred and forty billion dollars after fifteen years. And uh their calculation was that it's about a nine to one benefit to cost ratio for changing high school start times to after eight thirty. Um, I think that if there are legislators uh who want to know how we would use uh any inflation adjusted or increases towards adequacy at levels to improve our student outcomes, um especially given that transportation funding hasn't been addressed since twenty fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, thank you. Um, I think that committing funds towards whatever transportation needs exist that would be an excellent excellent complement to a a partnered commitment to smaller class sizes.
Thank you, member Lessons. Member Holloman?
Um, yes, I was going to confirm what Mr. Higgins said, that we have had high schools that had zero hours. And to follow up on yours, we we do that to middle school students even. So we try to put that pressure on them really early. Um, but I can understand where it could lead to exactly what you're describing. It and I think would be helpful for the board as we look into this again to know what is happening starting at six AM. Because I know for some of the hockey teams, that's when they they have to get in to have ice for extracurricular or intermural teams that have high participation rates. I know that at middle school, we had people in the gym at six practicing. Um, and again, this is all parent-provided transportation. There there wasn't any um district transportation for it. So our our schools are really busy. And I also remember that when we went through this before, some of the student testimony we had against moving high school later came from some of our highest performing students. They they want, they they were some of the ones in zero hour. They were completely booked after school. They didn't want to lose any time in the day. Um, and there aren't too many things you can do at six in the morning other than go to school in Anchorage. But there's a a host of things you can do at four, five, six, seven o'clock in the afternoon. So I I do feel like that's a part of it that we didn't really look at last time is how many students are in our buildings early at what times and and what kind of numbers and what they're doing. I know some are in classes, some are in athletics. Um, and I I really have no idea how how significant it is.
I I can probably take answer that through the chair to member Holloman. One of the things that um you know, we have these zero hours, we actually have after school, some after school classes also offerings. It's very limited.
Mm-hmm.
Most of the morning classes are things such as an extra choir, an extra band, something that they already have during the day, but they do it extra. It's kind of their passion kind of things. There are some schools that have some morning practices. Um, that's very minimal. There isn't a lot um actually hu- holding those practices. It might be a varsity volleyball because of space issues or something of the sort, but there isn't very many. Um, we do have a scat scattering of some courses, mostly CTE courses that happen after school. And then there's some schools, um some Title I schools that actually have some after school tutoring and an extra session and so forth um after school as well. So it isn't that many um that actually do those types of things. Um, a lot of it has to do with the equity piece. Um, and we're trying to get, we don't have a lot of like calculus that early. I I don't know if any high schools has have that that early. Um, but we also have another thing that has come up since this last study, and that is a little more robust um system for online learning. Where those kids that want extra courses can take that extra class. And actually, some kids will, I mean, at the high school level, especially juniors and seniors, if they want a more advanced class and something that isn't offered at the at the high school, they will do an online course and then um be off an hour early if they have transportation. Some of them are in a cyber center, some of them in the library, some of them in community labs. So we have that option that wasn't there is as robustly as we have now um in twenty eighteen.
Yeah, and and I I I'm glad you clarified that they're very limited because it would be like for when I was building a master schedule, it would be a zero hour um math, high level math, maybe even second year foreign language. Um, so it wouldn't be a whole menu of classes for students to take at zero hour. But they do exist. I'm sure they exist now, too. Member Jacobs.
Yeah, I just want to know, I saw, um, I do have a second question, but I know Mr. Bingham's hand is up. I don't know if you want to weigh in.
Um,
Mr. Bingham, I'm sorry, I gotta, I can't see you.
Uh, to member Holloman through the president, we get to a straw poll with the high school principals. And other than children that were in the building for pool or ice time, I think the straw poll indicated they thought sixty to eighty children on a given day would be in the 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 building for a zero period for one reason or another. Uh, sixty to eighty at each high school. So I think that would be at most um three sections or four sections of something. And I think that was a straw poll at a secondary principal's meeting. And we were just trying to get a rough guess across the district. Other than pool and ice time, how many children might be in the building forty-five minutes before the formal start of school? And their number was sixty to eighty.
Thank you. Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So um to circle back to where we started the conversation, um I believe Mr. Anderson was indicating he he wanted for uh majority support for, are we specifically, are you asking for that support to continue the conversation? Would it be an information informational memorandum? Are there budget complications for the FY twenty-four version you're working on?
You know, honestly, just uh we just want to uh have board acknowledgement. You want us to move forward with this um in support of uh focusing on student outcomes. We knew that if there really were six board members who knew tonight they're going to vote no. We knew that if there really were six board members who knew tonight they're going to vote no, no matter what, and they already know that, then it probably wouldn't be worth prioritizing this and pushing it forward. But if there's four or more that know that, that this, they believe this to be important enough, then we're ready to develop a plan and move forward.
So, excuse me, clarification. We maintain the, the minutes in the school day, the instructional day. We're just doing it at different times, in a different timeframe.
That would be correct.
Okay. And my other, were, were you, in twenty eighteen, yes, you were here. I, I'm, what was the drawback on, for the board at that time? It seems from Mr. Bingham's presentation that it was pretty positive, but something freaked the board out. What was it? Do you remember?
As with all public communication and testimony at school board meetings, they, it tends to draw people who are against. And you don't see a lot of people who are pro, especially if the, the room is full of people who are somewhat agitated. And, and so I think that's really what it was. I think there was that other side and you could see it in the survey, just like we saw on school closures where fifty-three percent recommended consolidating schools. But that's not what you saw at a town hall. And that's not what you saw at school board meetings during public testimony. And I think it was the, the overwhelming negative discussions and comments during public testimony that probably helped push. At the very end, we had one person who wanted to go with option A. One person, one school board member who wanted to go only if we did it exactly like the research said, which is elementary and, and switching, all of them, and the votes weren't there.
So the recommendation from, are we still, are you looking for consensus around the last recommendation?
No, we will restart. We'll come back with what we have as a recommendation based off surveys and some public meetings. It probably would not be as in depth as the last one, as you saw. That was a eight plus month effort. But we also believe that you have that data set already firmly established. Refresh the data set, get some new inputs, come back with a recommendation and, and discussion with the board.
Okay. Member Holloman?
I was going to say my recollection, and just as one of seven, was any change would be disruptive because everybody's used to what we're doing. We're, obviously that works. Everybody's figured that out. And that the more radical changes would be really disruptive. And then that came back to like, well, we could move it half an hour and that wouldn't be very disruptive. But it also wouldn't make that much difference. And to change everybody's schedule, every, everybody that's involved with the schools in Anchorage in order to give everybody thirty more minutes of early morning time. And I, I know that, that was the thing that made me feel like if, if we were going to change anything, we really wanted to get results from it. But there did seem to be a lot of opposition except to minimal change. So I suppose we could go for like thirty minutes this year and thirty minutes next year. It'd really make it bad. I, but that was my feeling last time was that the board felt like, if we really change this, it's really going to be turmoil for everybody. And if we move it just a little bit, there's still quite a bit of turmoil there, but what have we really gotten? We, we haven't gotten that much.
Was that before or after the quake?
Before or after?
The quake?
It was before the quake.
Before the quake, okay.
It, it was real consumptive. We spent a lot of time on it. There's a lot of public testimony. And, and it's, you know, like in, any of these things, or some people like it just the way it is. They've got it all figured out. For, for other people, a change would be good. But it, it was something that would impact every single person in the district that, that had kids or worked for the district. And that's a lot of people.
Yes. Okay, Member Donnelly.
My memory, there also seemed to be a lot of testimony that there'd be a disparate impact on less economically advantaged families. They would be less capable of adjusting to the change. So there was a lot of concern about that.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have two minutes left. Member Lessons, did you have a quick comment?
I just wanted to offer the perspective that last year, school, school in school times were adjusted. Elementary school started at nine thirty, I recall. We adjusted, we adapted. So parents, parents will adapt to whatever the reality is. I think our job is to do the best we can to support student learning. We have board outcomes that we expect for improved reading and math proficiency. And I think this is a path to get us there.
So if I can take a straw poll real quickly, those in favor of, are interested in the staff moving forward with a plan for school start times? Can I just see a, a thumbs or a hand? One, two, three, four. I see five. Member Wilson, did you have a preference?
He says she's. I'm interested, learning, I'm interested in learning more.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that, does that give you what you guys need?
Yes, ma'am.
Any final comments, Dr. Bryant?
Uh, no, we're excited to continue the research phase and present a proposal in the coming weeks.
And I think it's really important that we do, like you're already doing, looking at the, you know, the, 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 the science and what it tells us about student growth, learning and sleep. All right, we can't make them go to sleep, but we can put the framework in place where they can, will have the opportunity. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time. I'll accept a motion to adjourn into, to move into executive session, sorry.
Madam President, move to, uh, turn to executive, enter into executive session for the purpose of legal updates, negotiations and contracts. Second.
Is there any opposition to moving, to the motion to move into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session for one hour.